Great, thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, March 14th, 2022, and it is time for our regularly scheduled work session. The clerk call rule, please.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. The item on our work session agenda is transportation planning presentation. Jenna is gonna make that presentation for any of you that are joining us remotely. Work session is just a information dissemination time. We aren't making any decisions during this next 30 minute session. So Jenna, we'll turn it over to you.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you. And the memorandum that was provided to is intended to be a really high level overview of just some of the players in the transportation arena for Garden City, as well as high level, more policy level needs from staff's perspective within the transportation system specific to Garden City. And so of the needs that were identified, and unless you have any questions related to the agencies, I'm going to gloss right over that. And feel free to have this be more of a discussion atmosphere than a presentation, because it's really to answer any questions that you may have. At a, again, it was intended to be a high level, but if you have something that's a little bit in the weeds, I'm happy to try to answer that, or at least research it and get back with you. And some of the issues that were brought up within the memorandum is the city needs to have a transportation system that's supportive of the way that the city is growing. And it's no secret that this valley is growing very rapidly, and Garden City is part of that growth. And I believe that the compass forecast look at the city more than doubling in population. Again, that's a forecast. We never know. There's a lot to play into that. But how does that happen? As well as the regional growth. And in looking at the road system in Garden City, it's really similar to the bone system of an animal. It really shapes what's going on with the city from a land use perspective in many ways as well. And this is a slide that I've had around forever. You may have potentially seen it before, especially the mayor, since we've been around each other for a few years. But this is an example of a road system, like a collector or an arterial system, that has the same number of lanes as like a grid system. And in a grid system, specifically in the eastern portion of Garden City, south of the river, the lot sizes from 36th West to about the fairgrounds are pretty large. They're typically a 100 by 300 foot lot. And so you end up with a land use development pattern similar to this. A house up front on a larger piece of property. But if you start breaking up that grid system, there's much better access for redevelopment of the property. Also, something that I think all of the jurisdictions in the valley are thinking about right now is the cost of service. And in a road system, the more units that you service in the same area, it drops the cost of that service. So if you need to go plow a road for one unit versus 100 units, you have definite savings per mile. And again, the way that you set out that bone structure really dictates how that road will look and also how it can be utilized. You know, on an arterial roadway, unless it's designed correctly or adequately, you're far more likely to get a system where perhaps you wouldn't want kids to be biking on it. Whereas certainly a grid system would be difficult to do entirely throughout the valley. And so it's nice to have regional corridors as well. And another thing that the memorandum discussed was a complete street system, a need for complete streets. That's a planner term, really, at the end of the day, talking about needing a street system that has sidewalks, areas for parking, biking, and can really address all users. And in my point of view, too, maybe it's not technically correct, but start creating that sense of place that your community wants. These are both pictures from Google within Garden City. This is just off of Glenwood at Riverside Drive. A fairly comfortable, nice walk right next to similar traffic that you might find off of Chindon. And this is just a slide. In 2008, the city developed a vision for Chindon. And adding complete street components really can change how a street would feel. And this is just a rendering that was done at that time. We're adding some controlled access points and vegetation really would change the feeling of how that street feels for the community. And then there's always the question of the difference to users and the different mobility needs for all of the users. For a long time, Garden City, and will continue probably forever, to have a lot of the regional traffic move through on Glenwood, State Street, and Chindon. But those residents within or nearby users may be needing to use the transportation system quite differently than those that are driving through on Chindon, for example. And safety is a very big issue. Left-hand turns in particular have a lot of conflict points. This is a conventional intersection, and there are 42 conflict points in a conventional intersection, at a two lane conventional intersection. And so there are a lot of ways to deal with those conflict points, but controlled access is one for sure. If you look at Chindon, there's a lot of unrestricted access in places. And then there's a lot of properties with multiple access points. And every time you have those access points and people specifically doing left-hand turns to increase the risk of accidents, not only in the left-hand turn, but if you have bikers or pedestrians on the sidewalk, there's an increased risk for those individuals as well. But what the memorandum was discussing is the different agencies' roles. You have ITD that deals with State Street from Glenwood West, Glenwood, and Chindon. And then you have the local system. I believe that there needs to be a coordination between the land use jurisdictions and those two agencies to marry where the streets enter into the arterial systems. There was an example given in the memorandum of not that long ago, there was a subdivision that was a little bit of a head scratcher that came to the council. And that was because there were conflicting recommendations between ITD and ACHD on which road that subdivision should take access from. It would be nice just to know this is the road where access is going to be. And hopefully, then the stoplights can be married to those roads. This is just a gross slide talking about safety. It has a lot to do with design speeds, et cetera. And the speed in the community really is an important thing. Cars are getting bigger, and where they hit individuals, they're getting heavier, too. Not increasing fatalities. But if you're hit by a vehicle at 20 miles per hour, you have a pretty good chance of survival. Whereas if you get hit by a vehicle going 40 miles per hour, your chances are not that good. So safety, those access points, again, are really, really important. Again, back to the local grid that's discussed. Having a mechanism where currently ACHD has a futures map showing collector roads and arterials that are anticipated, but local roads are not part of that at this point in time that I'm aware of. And as you can see, even in Garden City, we have one-offs where we might have an incomplete system. In addition to needing to address perhaps our grid network for the redevelopment that's occurring in the eastern section of the city. And so having a good coordinated plan with ACHD would be very beneficial, I believe, for the communities. And this is a depiction of what 36th Street essentially ended up becoming. And a lot of the road, the right-of-way widths in the eastern portion of Garden City are right around 50 feet. And this is a depiction of what can occur within those 50 feet. You can have a sidewalk on street parking with landscape bulbouts. Landscape bulbouts are really preferred for the comfort of the pedestrian. You feel much safer. You might get some shade on the sidewalk. But if the sidewalk, especially at higher speeds, is adjacent to a road, people want to shy away from it. In 2015, the city was a part of a federal highway study on Chindon. And watching the individuals walk down Chindon, they didn't walk on the sidewalks that are provided at all. They walked clear over into the properties. And that's just the speed, the noise, and the discomfort for the user. And but I believe that there needs to be design features that help redevelopment within the existing right-of-way, because every time you have to go procure more right-of-way, it's very expensive for the public entities. And individuals are losing their property as well. And so having designs that can fit within what's there and available to the public in my perspective is needed. And with that.
So Jenna, on 36th Street, for example, go back to that slide. Part of the, that's a 20 mile per hour speed limit, I think, on that street. And then those travel lanes are narrower, too.
They are narrow.
And so that, I don't know if you've been down there when cars are parked, and if you're on either side and there's two-way traffic, it's a real traffic calming feature. I mean, it's just not comfortable, even at 20, to go whiz and buy somebody when in 11-foot lane. So I think there's that component to it, too, in certain locations. And where that street really dead ends into that waterfront district, and it's not really a through fare at all, I think slowing. I mean, it's a strategy to slow the cars down. I don't know if that was part of the intention or not, but functionally, if I'm in my pickup and I'm passing another pickup and the car is parked on both sides, those mirrors are going to be that far apart when you pass each other. So that works good. And then there's a lighting component, too, that we had to experiment with down there, because when, when that was first completed, you know, you could see the street from the space shuttle. Remember how bright it was? Yeah. I mean, it's like, I can't sleep at night. So we learned a lot of things on that street. And you're going to be in a 50-foot right-of-way. You're going to have narrower traffic lanes in this model. I think that's something we figured out. Remind me what we're doing on Carr and 32nd.
Um, Mayor, thank you. A very similar design is proposed. And where it's really important to have a design that is adopted, in my opinion, by ACHD. And 36th Street has a perfect example on development that was just approved in this past year, where there was an existing curb cut to an existing, you know, a use that had been there that was redeveloping. The applicant came and wanted to put this design down and add a tree on the back of site or on the front side of the sidewalk. And because there isn't this specific design that's adopted by ACHD, ACHD was unable to allow them to do a consistent design in the redevelopment. And as a matter of fact, because it's not a design that was ever adopted in the parking on that street or in pavement and papers, they weren't even allowed to put a tree on the back of their sidewalk. They couldn't have a tree at all. And so not having adopted policies that allow for designs to be consistent as they redevelop is a bit of an issue.
Thanks. You know, there are a lot of nuances we're going to run into as we redevelop some of these older streets with the waterline extension under Chindon, which is going to occur shortly. We're going to open up the west side, West Numbered Streets on the east end of town to more and more opportunities for development, because we'll be able to meet fire flows over there. Do some sewer upgrades with development, I assume. That'll figure some of that stuff out. So this is interesting. Jenna, why don't you share just a little bit about one of the challenges that you shared with me earlier, I think, about dealing with ITD and what we can do and who they want to involve? And this just, I just want you to understand, part of this work session is that there's a lot of moving parts when you've got a state highway, a local highway district that has exclusive control of the roadways in the middle of a general purpose government that hands the land use authority. And that all can get kind of balled up, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, ITD roadways are particularly challenging because ITD has policies where when a roadway is urbanized, so adding the sidewalks, potentially bike paths, then the local jurisdiction would take over. While Garden City is part of Ada County, where ACHD is essentially Garden City's roadway. And ACHD believes that they have policies that preclude them from maintaining the infrastructure on a state roadway. And so over the last two years, really, staff has been trying to work very closely with ITD to try to figure out how we can get those darn improvements. They're not opposed to them, per se, but they do believe that they're precluded from allowing the sidewalk system in Chindon because it's urbanizing. And so having a system where there could be that coordination between the agencies would be very helpful. The proposal that's on the plate right now that we're trying to work through is Garden City would take responsibility and pass that on to the adjacent property owners through an agreement at the time that they redeveloped. And then there would be an agreement with Garden City and ITD that Garden City would be taking on the responsibility.
What's the likelihood of that?
Um, the city, Councilmember Jacobs, Mayor, the city of Boise has had some level of success with an agreement, Front Myrtle are examples where they've been able to take that over. There's a little bit of reticence on ITD's part where this Garden City isn't staffed to fully take over a roadway like that and just go in and redo wholesale improvement on the roadway, nor maintain every, you know, the entire length. And so it's a little bit different for Garden City, just because we'd be relying on individuals to maintain. They're concerned that then every landscaping company would try to go shut down Chindon. And the improvements at a piecemeal effort can be very taxing. There are things going on underneath roadways, like utilities, that may need to be relocated on a one-by-one basis that could be extremely difficult. And there, just as a perspective on cost, even if something would be federally funded, there's a project that the city worked with different transportation agencies, Compass, ITD specifically, to develop. And that's a sidewalk from Glenwood to Maple Grove on the south side of Chindon. And then these numbers are two, two years old. But even at a 10% match, I think the city would have to put in $150,000 to try to get those sidewalks. So even, even if you find a great grant, any match would be taxing for a city of this size.
So, so the ITD doesn't provide any funds if they, if you have that agreement when the city takes over that? They don't, they're not helping fund that even though.
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, there are instances where there could be dialogue with ITD and Garden City. But as a standard, usually whichever agency is seeking those funds tends to be that which declares the ability to make a match. That's not to say that there may not be that dialogue that could occur.
It's one of those things that falls under a list of competing priorities sometimes. And, you know, there's just a lot of, I think the purpose isn't to discourage us. I think the purpose of this work session is to let you know there's a lot of moving parts when we're dealing with Idaho Department of Transportation and ACHD. Our local transportation are major collectors in Garden City or state highways. Currently, we aren't eligible for impact fees collected in Garden City to really be spent in Garden City, because we don't have any eligible roads. We'll continue to try to work that out with some changes, hopefully, either through ACHD policies or policies. That legislature, that course will be this year. So anyway, I just wanted to give an overview. And our adopted street plan isn't necessarily contained within ACHD's adopted plan, which is also challenging. Jenna's got connecting roads that have been reviewed with, obviously, now I use the term previous council. And perhaps we can, another one of these, we can go over that, Jenna. And then hopefully, you'll start to see how some of these pieces fit. So when we have projects along one of the state highways that are plowing new ground, meaning it's either a complete redevelopment or it's a vacant piece of ground. And we struggle with how we get the improvements in and where they're going to go and work within this ITD protocol and kind of try to marry that with the long-term vision the city has. So you'll understand maybe a little bit more about that as we go along. But we're just gonna occasionally have these work sessions to keep reminding all of us kind of how some of these things work together. You've got four minutes.
Mayor, thank you. I just have two things to note. The first of which, the timing of this really brief overview is coming because in two weeks, ACHD will be here for a work session related to, specifically intended, related to an OSAGE concept report. But it's just intended to help answer any questions about responsibilities prior to that meeting. And then the other, I certainly don't want to put him on the spot, but I do see that there is a member from ACHD on Zoom right now. I have not talked to him or asked him to talk to you. But if you have any questions specific for ACHD, you may be able to answer those.
Okay, thank you. What I think we'll do is, things come to mind. Why don't you just shoot Jenna a note and we'll get your answer in writing? Because you might ask a question that can't get answered in two minutes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. That concludes the topics that we were going to discuss on the work session. So we'll adjourn the work session and convene the council meeting in a couple of minutes. Good evening. Monday, March 14th, 2022. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Does the clerk certify the meeting notice, please?
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a single justice for all.
Item D is changes to the agenda. Now we'll move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That we approved the consent agenda as written.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk call roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item F1, our 2021 audit presentation. Jordan's with us. Welcome. It's good to see you.
Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Jordan Swiger from Swiger, John &amp; Associates. And I'm just going to briefly go over the audit for your year ended September 30th, 2021. I'll kind of hit some high notes, but if you have questions, please stop me. I'm more than happy to go into more detail. And if you open to page one, about the third page in with our letterhead, this is our report on your financial statements. What it says is, everything else after this comes from your accounting system. We looked at it. We looked at the supporting documents, how things were being accounted for. And in our opinion, everything's materially correct. So what that means is that throughout the years, you're getting reports and looking at those. You can rely on those. Those were accurately showing what was going on. From there, I'm going to jump to page six. This is the balance sheet for your general fund, your development service fund, and your library debt fund. So you see at the end of the year, the general fund ended with 5.2 million of cash. That's 6,000 of prepaid items. That's just insurance. But the insurance period's a little different from your year. The receivables, you had back property taxes about 108,000, which is pretty consistent with what it's been in the past. I'm a little bit of accounts payable that due from other governments of 476,000. Most of that is state sales tax that comes in October, but was for that last quarter. And then a little bit of franchise fees and other grants payable. On the liability side, you had some accounts payable. That's just invoices of timing when they came about 118,000. I'm accrued payroll and taxes of 204,000. That's just September's payroll that wasn't paid till October. 69,000 of compensated absences. That's just vacation time that hadn't been paid out yet. Unearned revenue of 1.3 million. That's new this year. And that's the ARPA funds that have been received. But because they hadn't been spent yet, it's not revenue. So that's, that's where those funds are sitting for the year. Development services, you ended with about 646,000 in cash. Again, a little bit of prepaid and back pay, back owed taxes on that. On the liability side, about $87,000 of invoices payable and payroll getting comparable to what has been in the past. Any questions on that? From there, I'll jump to page eight. This is the income statement for those funds. So the third line from the bottom, you'll see net change in fund balance. So you can see there, the general fund increased its reserve by about $593,000. Your development service increased by about 276,000. And your debt service fund broke even, which is what it does every year, because the taxes come in and go right back out for that service payment. Any questions on that? Any questions on that? From there, I'll jump to page 10. These are your proprietary funds, your water sewer fund and sanitation fund. So you see, water ended with about, water and sewer ended with about 3.4 million. And you had about 683 of accounts receivable at the end of the year. Your sanitation ended with just under $2,000, about 226,000 of receivables. On the liability side, similar to what it's been in the past. About 812,000 of payables in water and sewer and 200 in sanitation. There is no more debt in the water sewer fund that was paid off during the year, so that's no longer on there. Everything else, very similar to what it's been in the past. Any questions on that balance sheet?
So I'm not sure if the new council members know, we had a water bond, the revenue bond. Can't remember how long it was. Was it 20 years? Anyway. Yeah, we, we paid off and that funded the water treatment facilities we have on 43rd Street and Joplin.
And there's still a bond on this building, correct?
There's a library bond. And that that's, that's has its own levy.
Yeah, that debt service fund that zeros out, that's the making the payments on this bond. And we'll look at the notes later on the future payments on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, because it sunsets down earlier pretty quick.
Any other questions on that balance sheet? Turning to page 11, this is the income statement for the year. So you can see the sewer fund had a net increase of about 1.7 million, water sewer fund. On sanitation, had a decrease of about $87,000 for the year. And the sanitation fund, that's kind of normal. Some years it'll be up and down. Overall, it's a kind of a zero fund because it comes in and goes out. So that's normal there. Any questions on that income statement?
Just a comment. I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
The water sewer fund is combined, but you'll see as we get into our more detailed financials, when we do our six-month review, we'll bring this up. And as we get into the budget for '23, we'll bring this up. We do some additional accounting and segregate the actual function of the maintenance of our sewer system and the operation and maintenance of our water system. So, but this is the role of, of those things.
No, and that's a good point, Mayor, that the reports you get throughout the year are a lot more detailed. This is kind of a high-level summary review. Those reports you're getting throughout the year are the more important ones because that is showing you real time what's going on.
We've got two council members sitting through this audit presentation for their very first time. So that's, that's why I've interjected.
No, no, I appreciate it. So no, and if you do have questions, please stop. I know it's a, a lot of information, so. From there, I'll turn to page 12. This just is the statement of cash flow for the water sewer fund and the sanitation fund. Overall, cash went up by about 885,000 in the water sewer fund. On sanitation, cash went down about $76,000. On the sanitation, that million-dollar difference from the gain in cash. The big items there are the bond payment that went out, which is not an expense, and also depreciation expense, which hits done, but not the cash flow. Any questions on the financial, those basic financial statements?
I did have a question on page four. What's, well, just define unrestricted surplus.
So that means that there's no third-party restrictions on those funds.
Okay.
So you're, let's see, unrestricted.
It's on page four.
On page four. So there's three categories that that net position can be in. One is invested in capital assets, net of debt. And that's that top line net investment in capital assets. So that's all the equipment minus any debt associated with it. Restricted means that a third party has put a restriction on those funds, such as the development service. When you levy for that, that is restricted just for that purpose. So unrestricted surplus, that's the remainder that the city can use for what it sees fit.
Okay, alright.
Very good question. Any other questions? After the, those financials are the notes, and I'm just going to hit a few of them here. I'm going to jump forward to page 22. At the end of the year, this just breaks out where the cash was. So you can see, you had about 160,000 of CDs held at the end of the year, about $350,000 in money market accounts and 8.7 million, that external investment pool, that's the state local government investment pool where the bulk of your excess cash is sitting. If you turn to page 23, you see how that breaks out between governmental funds is your general fund and development service, business type activities are your water sewer fund and sanitation. So you see cash, cash, that's cash in the bank there of 234,000. And then investments are what we saw before of the 9 million combined there. From there, we'll jump forward to page 29. Just the way government financials are set up, there's some long-term liabilities that are in the general fund that don't show up. So we're going to look at those a little closer here in the footnotes. Footnote six, compensated absence. This is vacation time. The staff has earned, but hasn't been paid out yet. So you see at the end of the year, September 30th, you had a total of $350,000 that if all the employees had left, would have had to been paid out. For a city your size, that's a pretty reasonable amount, up a little from the year, but still pretty in line with where it should be. There, I'm going to jump forward again to page 32. Page 32, this just shows the debt. And so like you said, that general obligation bond at the beginning, that's the, the library bond. So you see it started with 295,000 left on it, 55,000 was paid down, so 240,000 is remaining on that. And then that revenue bond, that was the water sewer bond, was paid off during the year. And down below there, you can see through 2025, the minimum interest and principal payments on that library bond there. Footnote 11, the city does have credit cards. Your total balance, available balance on those is about 97,000. At the end of the year, there was 13,000 on them. That was subsequently paid off. But that was at September 30th, what the balance was on those. Foot, turning to page 33, footnote 13. You do have some copy releases that have been entered into, and this just shows the minimum payments through 2026, when those would be paid off. And that's just the minimum payments on those copy releases. There, I'll jump forward to page 36. These next two reports are, just show the budget versus what actually happened for the year. So you can see here, general fund, you brought in about $760,000 more than was budgeted. And you spent about $233,000 less than was budgeted. So in your original budget, bottom line, you had planned to spend about $400,000 of your reserve. I mean, instead you increased that reserve by 593,000 for the year.
And that's our flood study, my. Okay.
I think that's important to be heard.
Now, for, for those in the audience, we have been waiting for years for a consummation of a agreement we have with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to do a flood mitigation study to deal with flood risk we have through Garden City. And I won't go into a great bit of detail, but we can't make that work until a federal budget's approved. And we've been waiting for the authorization, which took several years. And now we're waiting for a federal budget to get approved. But our part of that study is going to be about 800,000 over three years. So this, this 400,000 is money we just carried over in our fund balance year over year. And then one of these years, we believe we're going to get to spend it. And feel, you know, get the core started on this very comprehensive study on manage through a, manage to mitigation of a flood event that the experts say will come sometime, we just don't know where. So that's what that's for.
Thank you, Mayor. Turn to page 37. This is the development service fund. So you can see, you brought in about $585,000 more that was budgeted for the year. You did spend $285,000 over what was budgeted. But again, you were still, because you brought in that excess, the reserve still increased for the year on that. From there, I'm going to jump forward to page 40. So in the state of Idaho, all government entities, in addition to just looking at the financial statements, we also look at internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. We did not have any findings there. We saw good controls in place. We saw we're more than one set of eyes. We're looking at and approving bank statements and invoices. Good segregation of duties and good checks and balances there, so we didn't have any findings. So overall, a good, clean audit report, everything was in good order when we got here. It was great, you know, working with the team, everything that we needed was provided to us. So no issues to report in the audit. Any questions for me on the audit report there?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. If you do have questions, I'll just offer our numbers on the top letterhead. I'm more than happy to go into detail on the two reports there as our number. If you do have questions moving forward.
Yes, I do actually have a question. In the, in the notes, just looking at page 29 under risk management. In, in your experience, what, how are we doing in our, our fund size or our coverage there compared to cities of our size?
As far as your fund balance.
Yes, as far as risk management, you know, the, the, I guess, are we adequately addressing that?
Mayor, council, yes. I, you know, your fund balance is at a good spot. Your insurance, you know, is what it should be for a city your size. We don't have concerns. We don't feel that your balance is exorbitant. You know, that you have a lot of excess cash more than we'd expect. But it's, it's a good, healthy fund balance and, you know, what we'd like to see for a city your size.
Okay, well, thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Pleasure having you here.
Thank you.
Nice job, Lisa. Hey, we'll move down to item F two. This is condition use permit FY 2021 dash zero 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 five. This is an extension request. Joe Turner.
Mr. Mayor, Joe is not available. He's the architect for Western Heating and Heating. This is Bob Barnes. I'm the president of Western Heating.
Great, thank you. Lisa, did you get the name? Okay. You may go ahead and present your extension request. Tell us why you need an extension.
Well, just through the process, we've got, what we have basically is a, you know, it's an over-exaggerated carport that was put on the side of our building many years ago. We're using, it's fenced in and secure slightly, but we're using it for warehouse storage space. And we're trying to come up with a design to, to tear that down and facilitate a, a little bit better space that's more secure and a little larger. You know, and, and allows us with the setbacks and stuff to increase our warehouse space. Obviously, we have grown with the growth in the valley and we're in need of some more warehouse space. And we're just hoping that we're compensating for it, but we haven't been able to come up with a design that that the design review committee can agree on. So we're, we're just, we're kind of tabling it for now and going to scratch our heads and see if we can't come up with something that we can all agree on, and we just need some time for that.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for the, the comments. I, I am curious, and I did read through the, the application or the request, I should say. Could you just speak to exactly what the impact of, of that storage space? You know, I guess what's stored and how does that impact your, your company's operations?
Well, mainly what's, what allow us to do is store more supplies and equipment and allow us to, with the current shipping issues and availability, we have to order in larger quantities and we're having to find remote areas away from our facility to store this stuff. And it's causing us a little bit of a hardship or, you know, just inefficiencies of happening. Every time we need something, we gotta go run to a different site and grab it and bring it back to, uh, put it in our trucks to go out every day on the jobs. And we'd like to have a facility a little bit larger so that at least we could warehouse maybe a week's worth of stuff, three, three days, three to five days worth of stuff. Currently, we cannot do that.
And as I, and just a follow-up question, as I understand it, this request is, is to brainstorm ways to expand that space without, while coming under the cap that would trigger additional requirements?
Yeah, mainly when that was put on there, it's just a real low ceiling height. And it's just, it's like I said, it's just an overhang. And we'd like to just basically tear it down and extend it up and give us something with a warehouse height of, you know, possibly a ceiling height of about 16 feet. Maybe extend it back into our own building in our own lot of little ways and take it out to the current setback minimums or maximums, however you want to put that. And then just, you know, put some bay doors on the front so that we could access it with forklifts and things like that, unload freight.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Pledge of counsel.
Mr. Mayor, move that we move to approve the CP FY 2021 oh five, granting the extension for the expansion of the, the property.
Thank you. Got a motion. A second.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? You're not all in favor of the motion of call roll, sorry.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
We'll go to item F three. This is asking the council to confirm my reappointments of the urban renewal board members as stated on the agenda. There was some confusion about the terms of office, so we thought we codify that by a reappointment process in which the terms of office are again codified.
Mr. Manhant was also for the urban renewal board members, terms to expire in staggered years. Sure. So that they're not trying to fill positions each year.
Thank you. So I'm placing these appointments before you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we confirm your reappointments for the urban renewal board members with the staggered terms as indicated by the agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Now the court call roll.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item G. This is resolutions, ordinances and contracts. We have a public hearing for S U B F Y 2022 dash zero 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 one. This is a River Pass subdivision. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. If you would, join us and we'll allow you to present your application. After that, we'll have Ms. Thornborough respond on behalf of the staff. And then from there, we'll open up the public hearing. Welcome.
Hi.
If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Marty Peroni. I'm the developer builder of this project. I'm going to go through it kind of like how I went through diet design review and whatnot. I've got it all set up that way, if that's okay, and just kind of walk you through the project. Which you're you're currently, okay, I see it. You're currently looking at the plot. It's one point nine five acres. Allowed twenty eight units. We've designed twenty three units here. With the help of staff and a design review, they kind of wanted some changes done on it to accommodate a little bit different floor plans, which I'll go through. But on that two, one point nine five acres, you you can see the twenty three units. Common area of my, is my cursor going, we got a common area here of a park, a picnic area, whatnot, down here, basketball courts. And across here, which we'll go into a little bit more, is the easement for the green belt. And of that one point nine five acres, twenty percent of it, twice what is recommended for common area. So there's twenty percent of that eighteen thousand plus square feet of common area. In the PUD application that we presented, we're in compliance on all setbacks except for the backyards. We have fourteen units that are ten foot in the backyard and nine units that are fourteen feet. All other areas, we're in total of compliance. We staggered the buildings. You can kind of see, let's see if I can do this with the mouse. Staggered the buildings on each one like right here, we're four foot back here, and that gives the patios on each one to have some privacy, and that was kind of what brought the different setbacks in the back, but so we could stagger it, have comfortable areas for each tenant. On the HOA, shall we go through that now, or is that pretty? Is it okay? On the HOA, we would like to we've got a ten foot easement for the green belt, but we have no connectivity to it and not sure if we ever will. I'll be honest, I'm hoping not. I'm hoping they can route. And I've matter of fact been approached this weekend by some organization that's trying to find the funds and build the bridge off of the island around so that all these folks don't have to go around fifty second street. So they kind of the staff is asked and and council or, excuse me, not you guys, but P and Z and design review to have that easement there. I'd like to have no problem having it set aside. I'm hoping it'll be more for all of the residents that start building along that area to get to get to the green belt without having to go out onto Remington and use the road. So with that said, it may be, it may be weeks, it may be twenty years before I have ever connectivity of other properties that'll take us to the green belt. So I'd like to set it up on the HOA that as people purchase the properties, there'll be an agreement that if it ever comes a time to do it, we'll put the pathway in. But I'd rather leave it landscaped because who knows when we'll ever have it connected. So something to consider. Landscape plan.
Pardon me, that that property that you're setting aside for the green belt will be held in common for the association.
Yes.
It's in its own dedicated.
It's right, right here. You can see a dotted line right there. It goes all the way down, so it'd be all across that whole eastern property line. Ten feet wide there.
Okay, I I think what we'd be interested in is making sure our city attorney has a chance to look at the easement language.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things that the design review wanted to see was a lot of foliage down here instead of seeing into the other property. So we realigned all the buildings and the turnaround down there and whatnot, we're able to come up with a nice buffer, and that's what that's showing. Here's the common area spaces. That's the twenty percent. And then on the end units, they wanted, and you've probably heard this many times before, but it was new to me, is is having the front doors facing Remington. So when we brought the project, we had all the doors facing into the private road, and so they wanted that out. So these are, I'm going to have a few different visuals of this. As you can see, here's the front door here coming out to Remington as they wanted, and they thought we did a great job creating a real solid looking front door. So here's it again, a couple of different views of the project and that front. There's twenty three units. There's nine of them are what we call the B units, which are the middle units right here. They're double stack garages. There's two fourplexes with this design, and then on the end units are what we call the A units. Different floor plans. The middle units are two master suites upstairs and the in the in units here have three bedrooms with an office down. These also have office on the first floor. And so there's two different floor plans right there. And just another look at the other one across the street. We have five of these buildings, which are three plexes and double car garages with a single in the middle or double stacked, I should say. And there's several different floor plans to this. Most of them, as you can, you know, you say three bedrooms too vast, two and a half fast, they sound so similar, but they really are quite a difference of floor plans in some of these. And then we have three of them on the end, which is kind of hard to see on this corner here on these. Let's see if I could do it better by showing you on the plot. They wanted to see some units, masters on the first floor for elderly or whatnot, not having to use maybe ADA compliant, but right here, right here, and right here, we were able to redesign and end up with masters on the first floor. So there's five different floor plans now. And I'll just kind of scroll through again the pictures of the project. And then the end right here is the color schemes. You can see this is what is called the south side of the project. This is the north side. So these designers view wanted to see the colors in the front doors and whatnot and how we created it. And that's pretty much the presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Peroni?
I had a couple of questions. So they're all two and three bedrooms, is that correct?
Yes, there will. There's three units that are four bedrooms.
Okay.
And that's with the master down.
And then the one, one thing I was just curious, why a PUD versus just a standard?
Because of the backyards couldn't fit with the double stack garage. The property is two hundred feet deep with twenty six feet for designated road, and you had to be forty feet with sidewalks and whatnot. It limited us to eighty. Is it eighty feet? I think it's eighty feet. And so we were just up against it where we couldn't quite get it where we ended up with fifteen feet with the double stack garages, and so that's why we ended up.
So so not you use the duty as a waiver to get around.
That's correct on that particular setback, yes.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Peroni, would you please walk me through the hammerhead, I guess, maybe at the end for the concern about the garbage trucks?
Yeah, this, by the way, happy to do that there. This is, I don't have it on here, but this was engineered with a thirty eight foot fire truck to be able to turn around. When we went to the fire department, they were happy to have that, but they still needed another turnaround. And we were able to, on the end of the plot right here, if you go one hundred feet, there's one more lot in front of this piece of property, and then there was a fire hydrant and it actual turnaround designed way back when. And because they wanted to see a hammer or a cul-de-sac right there. It goes into the flood plain and the ACH or Ada County wasn't thrilled about building a turnaround on that. And I said, well, what's that? And they said, wow, there is a hammerhead already designed for that spot. And both Ada County, ACHD, and the fire department were thrilled with it, and that's part of an offsite thing that we have to develop is that.
So it's just north.
It's it's literally one hundred feet past from where I'm doing it right here is the end of the property and that at the end of his hundred feet is a knuckle, turnaround knuckle. And I don't know if there's anything on your, I don't know, we've got that in any of the other pictures. I have that on some. I just don't think it's on here to show you that. Yeah. Anyway, that's, and so UPS and Amazon and whatnot, they'll use this, the garbage company. Once the garbage company reason you might have seen the letter on the packet was they thought it was apartments, and they didn't like the thought of everything out there and whatnot. Once they knew it was townhouses, they were happy to sign off and said, that's fine.
So I'm still curious, then, are are the residents to to wheel their carts to Remington?
No, no.
Okay.
With that, okay?
It's front of the house pickup.
That's correct.
They just didn't want to have to go in the back out, so that's why the hammer.
Well, they were afraid with apartments, who knows what'll happen there, just they they thought it would be very congestive. Once they knew that they were nicer townhouse style, they knew that everybody would want their garbage pickup and they'll accommodate to make it happen. So they were fine to sign off with it once we gave them that.
Any other questions?
Okay, may I just ask for clarification, Mr. Peroni, if you I wouldn't blame you for just rolling your eyes at this question, but do I understand correctly that you intend the HOA agreement would include language that the occupants would connect the properties to the green belt?
That's correct.
Okay, you're, I think, I think you'll want to take a look at the letter you you submitted.
Does it not say that? Well, I'm not a lawyer.
Well, and I'm not a linguist, so I won't type this. This is how it reads. What I propose is to add to the HOA agreement approved by staff that when connectivity has been established, River Path homeowner will agree to pave this pathway to connect our properties to make that access to the green belt. So I just read it as I thought you intended, but it reads River Path homeowner with agree. Now, that's a tricky, but but I just, I'm just asking you, that's your intention that homeowners will connect.
Okay.
And would that be binding on the HOA?
Yes, very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can force. I really, quite frankly, my concern with the whole pathway aspect of it, when when it was kind of getting really like, we're going to really try to route the pathway there, and I'm going really on private property like that, and what if kids come scooting down and come around the corner off the pathway and somebody's backing out of the garage, it makes me very nervous for the liability of the clients. That's why I have a bit of an issue with it, but I get the need for it at the same time. So what I hope it turns into is what we first discussed, all the properties along Remington will all connect to it and have so when she brings her son out and they get on their bikes, they don't go rent down Remington, they come right to here, right now, get on the green belts, and they're not on the roads. That would be ideal. I'm concerned about ten thousand people doing that loop through there. But I'm hoping with that gentleman this weekend called me and said they're hoping to raise money and and whatnot and build a bridge, and we'll see how that goes. But it could be years before we have connectivity. So as you even go down to the river, you see how the roots are tearing up asphalt and everything else. I just soon, once there's connectivity, we put the pathway in, we got a nice brand new path, and everybody moves on with it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And Councilmember Jacobs, that language is what I was referring to that Charlie would take a look at, and then when the plats recorded, the easement becomes a record then. It's not something you have to hope somebody in the future will agree to.
Okay.
It'll all be handled with the recording of the flat and the recording of the easement.
So it's not a promise and a prayer?
No.
No, it's not. I hope it stays green, but we'll see what happens with it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, procedurally, we're going to hear from Ms. Thornborough now, then we'll open it up for public comment. And then Mr. Peroni will have an opportunity to close out if he needs to come back and answer any other questions or rebut any testimony. So welcome, Jenna.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you for the introduction and a thorough report by Mr. Peroni. Just one thing to note, if you do wish to testify, there are some sheets that you can sign up on over at the table. All right, and just a few items on the record. All right, I guess, I believe the mayor already introduced it fully, a subdivision, because your twenty twenty two, number one, a residential subdivision that's been processed as a plan unit development at five eleven East Remington Street. And the staff report for this application begins on page seventy seven of your application. As some of the waivers were alluded to, there are four specific waivers requested as a part of this application. They include more than four units on a common drive. The rear setbacks that were discussed. And a reduction in the overall easement width for that green belt connection from code required twelve feet to ten feet. However, the proposed pathway would would remain the same with this required in code. And a request related to pressurized irrigation. Just to note that one, first off, there are state statutes related to pressurized irrigation. And so the recommendation that's coming to you is worded in such a way and that provided the city engineer approval and compliance with state statutes. That that be, there's a condition for that waiver. It's not a straight waiver that's in the recommendation. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Design Review Committee unanimously recommended approval of this application. And the entire city has had quite a discussion over the past year or so related to townhome subdivisions utilizing the plan unit development vehicle in that any, any residential subdivision where there are more than ten units, they're required to provide a variety of housing choices. And the Planning and Zoning Commission was quite complimentary of how this application does that. Where it was noted by the applicant, even though there are similar unit number of bedrooms, the applicant noted that there that they thought through different ways to handle who might be living there. For example, a master with other bedrooms on the same floor is designed intended for families, whereas dual masters is intended where there may be a roommate situation, and then there's a universal design in some of the units where there's the master on the ground floor that may lend way for those that may be mobility challenged. And I apologize if I missed other other types. And there there is the request from the applicant that's not currently conditioned to build the green belt connection at a later date. That's been discussed. If the council finds that that's something that should be conditioned, I might note that the language not only include the easement language, but a review of the Homeowners Association Agreement to make sure that that is adequate, that it would be built to the future time. And the city is in receipt of an email from Rochelle Klein with Republic Services on January tenth to staff member Hannah Beal noting that they would be supportive of the changes with that hammerhead and that they could provide curbside service. So we do have that from them. And the applicant in covering their basis did request a waiver for parking. Staff does not believe that that waiver is necessary. Code would require that there are fifty eight total spaces, including forty six in garage and twelve guests. This application proposes a hundred and two spaces with the required garage parking at two per unit plus additional two per unit parking and then ten guests. And so it's presumable that the the waiver is because there are only ten on the common areas of the subdivision versus twelve. But there is precedence, and traditionally, the the parking in front of the units, if they're available for guest parking, has been counted as guest parking. There is a drafted condition related to fencing where the adjacent property has noncompliant fencing with barbed wire and chain link. And that be conditioned. That there be some sort of affidavit or some other acknowledgement that the applicant understands and does not claim. Right to that fence. So when the adjacent property redevelops, that the fence can come down in compliance with the code. As the applicant noted, there was a request by design review in consiling. Reconciling between the design review and the planning and zoning commission. That the frontage on to Remington be bolstered a little bit with those patios as well as specifically noting that the terminus. When looking down towards that green belt connection be landscaped, the. Plans do show that landscaping. I will presume it's because if that pathway is installed in the future and that it remains landscaped. And the decision document starts on page 96 of your packet. The findings start on page 102. Based on the recommendations by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the design review, they are drafted in the affirmative. Consistent with their recommendations. This body certainly is in charge of reviewing the record in its entirety and can change those findings. However, if if. If you change those, please do. Provide a thorough analysis of of what those are so we can capture that within your decision document. And if you do for do end up denying this application, it should be noted. That there is a draft condition and denial that would need to state what the applicant could do. To achieve approval on their property and staff would also recommend a robust discussion and we could bring the decision back at a later time. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions of Jenna.
Jen, I'm assuming if you're waving pressurized irrigation all the city water.
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs. The the requirement would be pressurized irrigation. I believe this is the to the irrigation system themselves.
It's. Okay, I just want to understand that a little bit.
Hey, thank you. Hey, with that, we'll open the public hearing on CUPFY 2020. Whoops, pardon me, on SUB. FY 2022 dash one, Colin, we have any signed up? Is there anyone joining us remotely that wishes to testify?
I wish to testify.
Hey, would you identify yourself, please?
Yes, sir. Don May 120 East 41st Street, Garden City. I just want to say that I highly support this project. I think it's well thought out. And I think that the variety of housing is desperately needed. I think that housing in general, especially affordable housing such as townhomes, is desperately needed in this valley. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Any questions, counsel? Mr. Day. Thank you. Anyone else online that would like to testify regarding this application? Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Peroni, you have an opportunity to come back up and close it out for us, after which we'll close the public here.
To address the PI, let me. Pull that up, Jenna. I'm not going to screw it up. Thank you. Right. Right there, if you could see, there's a current well on the property. We can do the PI the normal way. We're kind of at the end of the line. It's very dirty water, but anyway, it can be done, bottom line. But right here, the gentleman owned the property that I bought the property from. He had a well drilled there. And I'm a guy that's had a landscape business for almost 40 years in Seattle. And so. Dealing with water is something that I do a lot. And that well, you can go on there. It must be. I bet you there's 25 spigots throughout the whole property. You can go to every single one of them on and they're just flowing. So I kind of wanted to use the well. They said, well, you're going to have to go through a process to do that. That'll be part of the process that I have to go through, whether they're going to accept that well for irrigation. I hope they do. It's a really good well and it's it's I've got it all set up to go if it if. Doesn't otherwise we'll be going to a standard PI system.
Great. Thank you for explaining.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else you need to correct or or?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you, guys.
At all.
Any further questions, counsel, before I close the hearing? Hey, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I'll turn it to the council for deliberation and action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I've had a chance to review as all of us have the materials before us and. I do feel that the applicants done a good job of, especially with the language of the PUD, you know, having this variety of housing that can be. A challenge and it seems like there were some creative ideas there to make that happen. And and I appreciate that knowing that other. Other applications that come before us have struggled in that area. And and with that, I would be. Moving that we. Approve. SUB FY 2000 or 20,022,000,001. Along with the. Conditions. Required in the staff report. The findings of fact conclusions of law and decision laid before us.
Thank you. Got a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second in discussion on the motion. Here now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heather.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
That's member Paige.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for bringing us a great project.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, let's move on to item G2. This is ordinance 1023-22. I'm going to have Charlie just set this up really quick and then Colin will explain what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Charles Wadham, City Attorney. My memorandum on this starts on page 149 of your packet. And so this is an amendment that our environmental department has requested for some time now. And so just I'm going to summarize this. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schmidt that understands all the technical nuances of why this is an appropriate ordinance. To set it up to new council members, whenever we amend the code, it's got to be by ordinance. And so this is an ordinance to amend the Garden City code. Typically requires three readings. I I don't see any reason why we would waive the rules in this situation. I don't think it's particularly time sensitive. So I would think three readings would be fine on this particular ordinance. So my memo is on page 149. The actual, well, I mean, there's a couple exhibits. There's an exhibit A on page 151 of your packet. Now, we'll just say briefly on that one. That is the last fee schedule. Let's see. Oh, yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Wallace calls an enforcement fees. I've gone through these enforcement fees and I will just want to make a real quick record that these enforcement fees were passed most recently by the city council on March 22nd of 2021. By this resolution 1091-21. And I've talked to or corresponded with Mr. Schmidt today. Because if you go to page seven of the enforcement fees. It does say towards the bottom under on page seven here, the enforcement fees. It says reporting a miscellaneous infractions. It does say that if somebody has a 60 days or or more of a late report. That the city could terminate their their city services. Mr. Schmidt has guaranteed to me that before we, the city attempts to terminate anybody's city services for this type of thing. That he'd be brought up past legal first. I do have some concerns along those lines. So I think we have that all figured out. The actual proposed ordinance that is on page 185 of your packet. And for for those of us new to elected office, the things that are being added are underlined. Anything that's taken out is redlined or stricken through. So you can see, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schmidt, why this is appropriate to do now, but the added wording is what's underlined. If you go to page, before I turn it over to Mr. Schmidt here, if you go to page. Page 10 of the proposed ordinance talks about the recovery of costs incurred by the city. And what and this is kind of like. Something that your staff, this is going to be a theme that your staff is going to be bringing to you with all these code amendments that are coming down the line. And there are several themes. One is to make the code simpler. One to take things out of the code that do not have to be in the code. And one of those things are are fee schedules. Public Works fee schedule should not be in the code. Development Services fee schedule should not be in the code. It should be referenced by resolution that and that's what this is right here. And that's what I wanted to point out on page 10. It says that the code says you're going to follow the states going to follow the fee schedule or in this case, the enforcement schedule that is adopted by resolution. And the reason for that, just for just for the record, I suppose, it's much easier and takes a lot less time to amend something by resolution or adopt a resolution than having to go back. And amend the code, which sometimes I mean, there's a lot of different steps with many of the code. So this is kind of a theme you're going to be hearing from us. If it doesn't have to be in the code, take it out of the code. We can do it by resolution. We can do it by administrative policy. And then that way I think we can be more nimble and move quicker, faster and stronger.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mayor, council members. Charlie was spot on with all this. The the reason this is coming to you tonight is this this is long overdue. So a lot of the verbiage has changed over the years with EPA, with our permits. And we've not been able to go through and change it because of the length it takes to get something changed, codified, all that. So. As Charlie alluded to, it's going to be much more, much easier for us. We'll be much more nimble, being able to change some of the vernacular that they use. All the time they're coming up with new ways of describing things. If if you notice in the in the under proposal and intent 414-2, and I apologize for not having a page number. You'll see that most of the changes in there are the same thing over and over. They've they've changed.
For the record.
The storm drain system to and or waters of the state or US either directly or indirectly. That's a reoccurring theme in this change. This is something that's been on the books for quite a while, but we just have not been able to incorporate it into. Our code, if you will, and like Charlie mentioned, having this in a resolution will make it much easier for us to stay on top of these changes. Couple of the other changes, I think there was one, there was a spelling error. They changed discharge to the storm. Of of storm water to a storm drain. So encompasses more and a lot of our permits deal directly with discharges piped. MS4 discharges that are piped directly to waters in the US. So it gives us a little more ability to to move within the permits. A little quicker and adapt quicker. The fee schedule that Charlie mentioned. That in we we have agreed, Charlie and I have talked about this, that we will not, there's there'll be no termination of services unless it goes through our legal advisor first. So. Other than that, I I think it's it's pretty simple. I mean, if you look through it, there there aren't any major changes, just some. Verbiage, I guess, that has come down from the federal level. So I would I would be more than happy to answer any questions. I I probably rambled on through that.
Colin. Is it true that the. Federal government in one form or another. Handles the definition of what a water of the United States is.
Mayor Evans, that that is correct. Yes, that comes down from a federal, from the federal.
My point is, we aren't trying to figure out what a water of the United States is. There's criteria where we could identify it, but actually can be delineated by the Corps of Engineers or. Or some somebody else.
That that is correct. Even even though we have, we now have precedents or a worry. Idaho has taken over this part of the environmental enforcement and regulations permits from the federal government. They still have to follow and we also still have to follow federal regulations. We can't make it up ourselves, right?
Yeah, we have primacy on the stormwater front, but you just want to know if this pond out here behind behind City Hall and so. Water of the United States will also learn doesn't necessarily have to have any water in it. So anyway, that's another story. So any questions of Mr. Schmidt? Thank you. Counsel, as Charlie indicated, our request is that we have a motion to read ordinance 102322 for the first reading by title only. This will occur over the next three council meetings, including tonight's, one of which will include a public hearing. But tonight, we're just asking you to. Move that we have it read by title only for the first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we have the clerk read by title only ordinance number 101023-22 for its first reading.
Second. And a motion and second for discussion. Your non clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
That's member Paige.
Yes.
Councilmember Heather.
Yes.
Ordinance 1023-22, the ordinance of the city of Garden City, the municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, and Garden City Code Title IV. Public Compensating Chapter 14 Stormwater Management and Discharge Control, Section 2, Purpose and Intent, Section 3, Definitions. Section, section five, Discharging Pollutants, section six, Compliance with the PMS. Section, section seven, Notification of Spills, section nine, Elusive Connections, section 10, Reduction of Pollutants in Stormwater, section 11. Parking lots and similar structures, section 12, outdoor storage areas, commercial and industrial facilities, section 13, construction sites. Section 14, New Development and Redevelopment, and section 16, Authority to Inspect. By amending the language to include protections for waters of the unit of waters of the state or US in storm drain regulation provisions. Providing separability, fulfilling conflicting city code provisions. Approving a summary of ordinance and providing an effectivity.
Thank you. We'll move on to item G3. Just to catch your breath there. Resolution 1115-22. This is a support services agreement. Charlie, do you want to brief counsel on this?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My memorandum on this is on page 197 of your packet. And what this is, is that it's a proposed support services agreement with urban renewal. And to set this up just a little bit, this is just for like support services agreement. For use of cities, city support staff, city staff and city office materials. This is specifically for you, the URA's program administrator. That's her title currently and in years past. The URA program administrator has headed office here at City Hall. The URA has paid the city $500 a month for the city hall or for the access to the office. So when I was asked to look at this more recently, the last time we amended or entered into an agreement with them was in 2017. I started looking at it. And I thought we could weather some things that we just needed to change. I looked around a little bit. I looked at Ketchum's agreement they have with their urban renewal district. And I and so I repoked some things from Ketchum's agreement. But one of the things I did notice in Ketchum's agreement is that whenever the urban renewal uses city staff, they pay for city staff time. And and you got to remember there's there are two different different entities, the city and the urban renewal districts cannot be alter egos of each other. So we were real careful to keep that segregated or separated. So this agreement says if the program administrator. So this agreement says if the program administrator or anybody else wants to use staff time, they're going to pay for it in fifteen minute increments. That's similar to what Ketchum does, and I think I'm making the same recommendation with this in urban renewals agreed to it. So it breaks down to fifteen minute increments if they need to use some of our staff time. We've changed the lease to two fifty a month to try to, you know, reconcile this. Another thing that we've talked about is really boils down to the fact that we are running out of space in City Hall. We just don't have the space. So the program administrator or office, she's going to lose her office at the end of the fiscal year, which is September thirtieth. And I think they've agreed to that. So the program administrator can stay here through September thirtieth. They're going to pay two hundred fifty dollars a month. We're just running out of space. Jenna definitely needs the space where the program administrator currently is. So we're going to recoup our costs on this. If I could just walk you through a couple highlights on page one ninety eight. I'm asking the council to pass this resolution one 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 five dash two two. That is authorizing the mayor to enter into this agreement with the urban renewal. On page one ninety nine is where the actual agreement starts. And a couple of things I just want to make sure I covered on page two hundred. It does talk about that we changed basically the liaison with urban renewal from the public works director to the city clerk treasurer. We thought that worked better. Section three on page two hundred, it talks about how we're going to build fifteen minute increments if they do have to use staff time. There are some exceptions to that, like Mr. Schmidt, our public works director will still go to their meetings. That's no charge. I think there's a carve out here for something that Lisa might be doing, but other than that, it's fifteen minute increments. On page two oh one, it talks about insurance and I just want to make sure everybody's clear on insurance. But we did go back and forth with their attorneys a little bit. This insurance provision is only workers comp insurance. And it's only saying that if one of our employees gets hurt on an urban renewal project, that we're going to have workers comp insurance for our employee, our employee to make sure there's insurance, insurance workers comp for that person. And an example of that is the Heron Park that we did, that was an urban renewal project. Colin went out there and worked on an urban renewal project. Well, what happens if Colin gets hurt out there on an urban renewal project? This says right here, the city's workers comp will pick up, you know, that cost. So that's something that they really wanted in there. The last thing. It's the last thing. I think that's about it. It's pretty straightforward. I've looked at it. It's clean. I've worked with the other attorney who's great to work with, and I'm going to ask that you pass resolution one 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 five best two two.
Any questions of staff? Okay, what a pleasure, counsel.
Miss Mayor, I moved to approve resolution one 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 five dash twenty two, approving the support services agreement for fiscal year twenty two between the city garden city and the garden city herbal renewal agency.
Second, had a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Your number third call roll.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes. Yes.
Carries. That concludes at least temporarily the public portion of a meeting. We have to have an executive session to discuss some legal matters that we have pending. After our executive session, we will reconvene in the event that there's a decision that needs to be made as a result of the discussion that occurs in executive session. So with that, I requested inaction to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that in accordance with Idaho code seventy four two oh six one F, we move to executive session to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely be litigated. After which the regular city council meeting will convene for potential action.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.